Okay, so I'll begin to order. First, I just want to welcome everybody, both speakers and public. Normally, we have the public comments first, but there are just two presentations that we wanted out first so that the presenters will be able to leave as quickly as possible. So if that's agreeable with everyone, we'll do that, okay? All right, so the first point on the agenda is the community eligibility program with Lori Brody.
Good evening, everybody. We wanted to give you just a brief update of where things stand with the nutrition department. As a quick review and reminder to everybody, your school nutrition department employs two head cooks, seven food service helpers, and a part-time clerical cashier person. We are currently serving a little over 1,000 meals a day to students, including our Head Start four and our UPK three students. Some days up to as many as 1,015 meals a day, which is terrific. And we do also provide SNAP for all of the pre-K and Head Start students as well, in addition to our breakfast and lunch every day. So our participation was one of the main things that I wanted to share. The last time that we spoke, participation was up, certainly, and now that we are almost 10 full months into school, what I've done is just taken a look at what our actual average participation for meals is for this entire school year through this past Monday, June 11th. If we take a look at breakfast first, our East Hill breakfast, which is a pre-K through eight participation figure, 38 percent of the students at East Hill are eating breakfast on a daily basis. At this time, last year's average was only 21 percent. So we have 17 percent more students in that building eating breakfast. And here at the high school, we now have 30 percent of the high school students a day eating breakfast. We were only at 16, so it's a 14 percent increase. And 30 percent for breakfast for high schoolers is actually a very nice number. Not that we would not always like to see everything go higher. Our lunch, coincidentally, is almost exactly the same for the East Hill building and this building. Both buildings, our year average is in the 72 to 73 percent participation. And last year, they both ran 50 to 51 percent. So in both cases, we're talking 22 percent more students eating lunch than were eating lunch last year. So we are definitely seeing the participation we wanted to see. When I take a look at overall, if we say our overall meal increase, breakfast, lunch, all four kitchen locations, district-wide, then our increase is 19 percent. When we all met in last summer, prior to doing the community eligibility vote, that was what we had targeted. We had hoped and thought that our meal participation would increase somewhere between 15 and 20 percent, and we've come in at 19 percent. So we've definitely seen the participation that we had hoped to see. And I think that students have been very happy with the ability to be able to get a meal whenever they want to without having to worry about anything. What's been very nice from our department administratively is, you know, we've all seen a lot in the news about lunch chaining, and we're seeing legislation that's coming out to prevent schools from doing that. And it's just a very nice position for the school district to be in, that we are not faced with telling six-year-old they can't have a meal because they don't have money or because they owe too much money. And one of the things that, you know, the CEP program does that we don't always necessarily think about upfront is the fact that it's removing all of that from the equation, and we never have to worry about telling certain students that they can eat certain things and other ones can't and, you know, having to worry about who owes what. So that's been very nice. Poverty-wise, I do provide poverty numbers for the district every month that are based on our families who are qualifying for some sort of services. So at this point, because this was year one for community eligibility, no paper applications, voluntary or otherwise, go out. So we've collected virtually no pieces of paper from any parents. So our poverty numbers are strictly what now used to be the county providing the list. Now it's actually New York State. It's the lists that they provide to me on a monthly basis of the students that are enrolled in our district whose family are participating in either SNAP or temporary assistance or Medicaid. At this time, where we are for the end of May, our May 31 numbers, our elementary school building is at 55 percent. So 55 percent of the students through the fifth grade are reported at that level, 42 percent at the middle school, 38 at the high school. So our district-wide poverty number based solely on those direct certifications is 47.3 percent. What happens going forward, should we remain, you know, as a community eligibility district and go ahead to year two? In year two, we do put out a voluntary income disclosure to all of the parents in the district. It goes out once. We have to send it out in the fall. It's an opportunity for them to voluntarily disclose household income if they choose to. We go ahead and put that into the system. It does allow us to target some families that are at what we used to call the reduced level, that maybe are not on those roles, not receiving assistance, but have an income in the household that's low enough that would qualify them for certain services. So what happens is in year two, we've got that 47.3 percent district-wide poverty level right now. We would probably see that next year push up more towards the 50 percent because we'll have at least a small amount of applications that are returned. We do have those voluntary income disclosure forms now, and we do use them solely if we have a student who's trying to qualify for something. Maybe it has to do with, you know, a scholarship situation, or if there's a fee reduction for driver education or AP courses or anything like that. We do have the ability to give the family that form and go ahead and have them fill it out to see that they qualify. But going forward, that form will go out eventually in year two. It's designed to go out to everyone. And you put it out once and you get back what you get back. But right now, that is where we are as far as the poverty numbers go. That is almost exactly the same number that we had last year of direct certifications. So again, if we move forward into year two of community eligibility, the percentage that we're receiving, right now, we receive 76 percent of our meals at the highest reimbursement rate that the federal and state government together provide, and 24 percent of our meals are at the lowest rate that's provided. And the way that our numbers are right now is almost exactly the same. So we would remain at that 76-24. When we sign on for community eligibility, we're automatically guaranteed four years at that level. Should our level decrease, if something fabulous happens in our community and two years from now our poverty level is only 35 percent, we're still guaranteed that 76-24 that we were originally approved at for the four years. However, should our numbers go up on our end, and I can, you know, show them the data that our numbers have gone up, then on the annual basis, that percentage can get increased if we have the numbers to support that. But at this time, I would anticipate that we would remain almost exactly the same, a 1 percent change at the most. We would not have to make a decision as a district to continue with community eligibility until this fiscal year has ended and, you know, and we have a chance to see where our numbers have come in as far as expenses and income and so on. We're still looking at what we were looking at in January, that we're, you know, hopeful that that's going to, we're going to be somewhere right around the break-even level with the program, which for feeding that many more students would probably be as good as we could hope to be. And we are automatically approved to continue with the program. So it would only be if for some reason, as a district, we decided that fiscally it wasn't doable for us to continue. We always have the option to back out, but other than that, we're automatically assumed to continue for four years. And then you have an option to renew for a fifth year. That's a pretty automatic situation there. We did also receive an increase in government commodity food. We received dollars from the USDA for government commodities, and what happens annually is those dollars come into the district and they are either spent directly on food that comes directly, directly from farm programs mostly, and it's for things like canned fruits and vegetables, frozen fruits and vegetables, things you might typically think of as government food, cheese slices, some raw beef products, some raw turkey products. So we have money that goes for that. We also can use some of that government commodity food dollars, and we can divert some of that raw product and have it come back to us as a discount on finished product. So an example of that would be we can take dollars that we would spend on cheese and instead of buying, you know, pounds and pounds and pounds of cheese that are physically sitting in the cooler in the district, that cheese can be sent to a manufacturer who uses it to make pizza that then comes back into the district. And we receive the pizza at a discounted price based on the fact that that cheese has been provided to the manufacturer. So we have the ability to use this pool of money, you know, in a couple of different ways, but because of going, becoming a community eligibility school district, we did see an increase of about 20 percent this year in the government commodity money that we're receiving. Based on how much of an increase we have with this 19 percent meal participation increase, I would anticipate about another 20 percent increase in government commodities for the school year that comes after. Because really what happens is that commodity total that we receive is based on your previous school year's participation. So we kind of get an automatic bump, like our reward for going CEP, but then our participation numbers will facilitate an even better bump in the school year after that. So that is a savings to the district as well, because every time we're using some of those commodity foods, that's foods that we're not purchasing from Cisco or somebody else. So it does work in our favor on our bottom line. A couple other last little things. I did want to note that we are doing a summer program again in the district. The summer meal program will be located at East Hill. It will begin on Monday, July 9, and will run through Friday, August 17. Breakfast and lunch are available each day at East Hill. We serve the students who are in the building for Mrs. Ward's enrichment program, those students. We also, you know, anyone that you have in contact with, to please share the word, last year, we did a lot of serving of the drive-bred students when they were finished with their driving and they were hungry because they were teenage boys. So we're certainly open for drive-bred students, kids who are here for a sports camp, anything like that, and any families who just choose to walk in to get a breakfast or a lunch. It is open to all students who are 18 and under. They don't have to be district residents. The way the program works through the USDA, if they walk through the door, we feed them and they're able to go to any local sites to be able to do that. So we will be running that again, and I believe this is our sixth year of having that summer program available. And every year, we have increased the participation in that as well. Studies do show us that our participation in schools in September is always higher in districts that have a program over the summer, because then it kind of provides a continuity for those students. They've been eating, they're still been eating, and they come back in September still ready to continue getting meals again. Anyone have any questions for us, thoughts?
I have one.
Okay.
The government commodity money, can that be used to buy local farm produce and/or beef or chicken or whatever?
Yes, we also participate in something called the pilot program. And through the pilot program, I set aside a certain percentage of that government money to specifically be used for farm-to-school purchases. Around here, most of that takes, the pilot program takes the form of Apple products because that's what's most available for the most amount of time. Some of you may have heard and be aware that there is legislation that if 30 percent of our food budget can be spent on farm-to-school products going forward, that we will receive a higher per-meal reimbursement rate. And at this point in time, we do anticipate being able to make that 30 percent. Fortunately, our milk purchases do count towards that 30 percent. And for a district where, like you said, that are serving about 1,000 meals a day, that's a lot of milk that we're purchasing, we're also taking some steps. We do, you know, we purchase a lot of cheese here in the district as well. That would be our second highest dairy product that we purchase. And we are taking some steps to purchase that through the same dairy that provides the milk so that it is New York State cheese. In order to qualify, those 30 percent of purchases have to be New York State purchases. They do not necessarily have to be Montgomery County, Fulton County, but they do have to be New York State. We are also currently working with some of our vendors. I went down to Capital City Produce and saw their facility at the Manans. There's a large retail farmer's market down there. We went down there and met with some of the producers of the vegetables and fruits that are down there. And we will be working with our vendors to receive more of our fresh fruits and vegetables that will come directly out of that capital region farmer's market and through Cisco and Ginsburg will be able to be delivered to our school. So we will definitely see more farm-to-school products on our menu. They're working hard on their end to do better with labeling those products for us, either on the invoice or on the product itself. We will start seeing those produce items coming in labeled either as "Made in USA" or "Made in New York State" to help us to be able to track. Because like any other government program, if they're going to give us money, there are lots of forms and tracking that I have to do in exchange to get the money. But we're finding, you know, that the distributors are all being very cooperative with us and meeting those requirements to track it. And so we will definitely in the coming school years see more New York State products than we have ever seen going into our school meals than before.
Anyone else? I just have one comment to make, which is it's just very heartening to hear the increase of participation rate has not only occurred but continued. And it really kind of, I think, underscores the importance of us getting involved in this program in terms of if any kids in our school district are going to go to a kindergarten.
When we're talking 20 percent more kids eating than were before, you know, out of those 20 percent, certainly a certain percent of the percentage probably had a lovely lunch that they brought from home, but a large part of that 20 percent probably did not have something very nice that they brought from home. So, you know, hopefully, we're making that day a little bit better for them.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next point on the agenda is Berkshire Farms Home Run Program, baseball stadium.
They drag me along. I'm a big man, I'm a special social services. That's my daytime job, but in the evening, I'm in moonlight as the Village of Banks mayor, the People's Republic of Banks. This is Elida Bunk and Jennifer Dane from Berkshire. I've worked with them very closely on other preventive programs, and they have some good stuff to tell you, and I'm sure you're waiting here for it. Here about it, we've been working with several of you, talking about this for a while, and I think we'll move and talk to action, and I think we're all excited about that.
Great. So thank you so much for having us here. So Elida and I both oversee prevention programming for Berkshire Farm. So we work, again, as Mike said, very closely with Montgomery County in preventing youth from going into placement, out-of-school district placements, a lot of the high-risk behaviors and concerns, whether it be a family systems issue or a school issue. So we look very closely at the county on those and address so kids can be more productive in their own communities. So the Home Run Program, do you have any just, okay. Oh, you gave it up. Yeah. So we're just giving you some information about our community-based programming, and there's a flyer for a Home Run Program we run in Franklin County. So we'll develop the brochures to your county, to your school district for, to be able to distribute to families for information. So there's a lot of information on there. So we've been, Berkshire's been a business for a long time, over 130 years, and we are the only statewide agency that has a full continuum of care from respite care, prevention, group homes, foster care, residential, and detention services. So we have the ability to move kids in and out of systems, and we've got a lot of experience working with kids and families. So the Home Run Program, it's a home and community-based and school and community-based program. So we work directly with the families in the home, and we would be based in the school, see the youth two to three times a week with face-to-face. So that could be groups, it could be individual sessions, it could be pushing in for observation, school needs, whatever it is. So our family specialist becomes part of the fabric of the school, works very closely with the school district to provide what that child needs face-to-face. Excuse me. So a lot of it also is, as you know, it's systems issues within the home. So we are able to go, we go to the home, we work with the families, we develop goals and treatment plans together. We do a lot of evidence-based empirical assessments to be able to peel back those layers to see what the drivers are for the issues that are causing this family or this youth to become at risk. So with that, we, a lot of the, we have overarching goals for the programs. The first one would be to prevent placement because we really want kids to stay in their communities, so they're going to be the most productive. Going into foster care is necessary in a lot of instances, but it's also, it can be very damaging for youth to be separated from their family. So this program will be able to keep kids unified with their families, address some of whatever the issues are. In conjunction with that, we see the families every other week in the home. We work on parent education, we work on parenting skills, we work on budgeting, you name it. They have a dirty house, we're the ones they call to get in and help clean it. So we address all of those issues. We have a no-reject policy. We do pretty much whatever it takes to help that family be successful. So that's it in a very brief nutshell. It's been a long night. So are there any questions or anything you could think of? I didn't hear anything.
You said pushing in, what did that mean?
To a classroom, so if a youth is having, just in one specific class, they're having very disruptive behaviors or there's some issue there, we may sit in the classroom to observe, see what behaviors are coming about, what, if we see a trigger or a driver, something that'll give us more information to be able to address that and treat them and treat them issues. So there's one family specialist that will be based in the school. They'll have a caseload of 10 families, 10 targeted youth. We work with the entire family, so there's a trickle-down, trickle-up effect with working with the family on establishing household rules, privileges, consequences, all of those pieces, getting systems in place for families. They don't, they don't want to go to social services because they're embarrassed, or they've never done it, or we take them there. Whatever that situation is that's a barrier for the family, that's what we work on with the family. It's very strength-based. We have an enormous amount of training for our staff, everything from engagement to cognitive behavior therapy to structural family therapy. There's a lot of modalities of our trainings that are involved with these families, with our staff. So they're very highly skilled. It's an intensive program. We want to nip it in the bud so kids can be productive. We provide crisis intervention services. We have a 24/7 phone that families are able to call if they're in need of services. And we also have a summer program, so we continue, you know, the kids' connection with the school. You know, we get them involved in different community activities, such as volunteering, that sort of thing. So, you know, we provide, you know, transportation as needed, and really, we roll our sleeves up, get ready with the family, and do whatever it takes to help them really be successful. Another key part of this program is it's a telephone program, so they are switching to say with the families all year long. So we've been, that's. We help get the kids prepared for school in the fall, ensure they have the supplies they need, ensure the family has a routine, they're ready to start this year off with and be productive, and then carry that through. So we cycle through a lot of, you know, kids move in and out of districts in the summer. We keep a roster of families always, so we have, 10 slots are always full. But in the summer, there's a lot of summer programming opportunities that kids normally wouldn't have access to, so broadening their horizons about what's out there in the world. They're not just sitting home playing video games all summer, they're going to museums, they're going rock climbing, they're doing, they're active, they're out there getting, getting tired, they're like a pirate. So, and then over breaks, we work with families over breaks, we do the same thing. There's activities built in, we do all year round with the kids. Summers and breaks, we also ensure the family has enough food for those breaks. It's a strain on the family not having free lunch and free breakfast, so we ensure that they have that, they're learning how to budget with their food stamps or their money or whatever they're doing so it can last the whole month. And like we said, we have a 24/7 hotline or crisis line for families to call, but it's a big tool also for families to help educate them on what a crisis is. Because you know, somebody in your family is just functioning in crisis. So helping them understand and learn those skills, build those skills up. So we're working on social skills with the family, with the kids, parenting skills, just enhancing the skills. So through that initial assessment phase, we can really take a good look at where their strengths are that we can build on. So building on, we have a strength-based, trauma-informed focus, so we don't look at what their deficits are, we look at what the deficits, what the needs are, but we look at the strengths and say, you know, what are we building on? So it's not that they don't have parenting skills, they have parenting skills. The kids are home, they're okay, it's just we need to enhance them, we need to build on those strengths and so that the kids are productive and the family's more about it.
So from the website, it looked like it was a K through five program, this Home Run Program?
It's what we want it to be. Those are model programs. It's like I always equate it to you go and you buy a hammer, or you can get pickles, or you can get this, you can get that. So whatever your school district is going to, these are, our programs are designed for a targeted audience, and then whatever your school district or whatever the county needs or they see the heightened area, that's where we are. If you have kids that are middle school, that's where your biggest need is, that's where we're now, you decide.
Question. You said that you have 10 slots, basically. How are you determining who gets those 10 slots?
We meet, we have case review every month. We're in the school district, so we're working with the families, we're working with the teachers, and, I mean, every school district calls with something different, so I apologize if it's not, it's a child's study team or a child's study team. So we're, we sit on that team with you.
So you work with a PPS team?
Absolutely. Guidance, support.
Yeah. That was great. Yes, we sat down, we initially heard about this program, we sat down with them, and we chatted about what it looks like and what our specific needs are here, and then we brought it back to the team as a whole and said, you know, do we have the 10 families? And we have 10 families that absolutely, and we have others that would definitely be, fill in any holes that could come up. So it's definitely a targeted need that we're seeing. I think the biggest positive of this program is the fact that it is directly targeting the families, they're in there, working with the families. We have a fantastic social worker, but she's K-12. And as much work as we're doing there, there are certain families that we can do a lot more with intensive support.
Can I give an example? If we had a youth that was having a immune attendance issue, we have the ability to go right to the home and, you know, assist the parent, you know, making sure that the child gets up, some challenges they're having, and, you know, we'll assess the situation. Sometimes it's as simple as a one clap, and sometimes it's a little bit more complicated. So, you know, we basically work with everybody on an individual basis, you know, do our assessments, and, you know, the families will determine the goals of what we're doing with us, whoever's participating. And then we meet monthly, we set up a school review where we're at, and then, you know, determine discharge, discharge, you know, with, you know, the school district, whoever's going to make the decisions. So the referrals come directly from the school district. They don't, we don't generate them, you guys do. So these are your scene where your highest need is, and you're establishing referrals, and we meet with you monthly to review the cases, triage new referrals, we look at discharge. Our philosophy is discharge begins at intake. What do we need to do to work with this family to help them be successful and have systems out of their life and they're flying on the road and they're keeping their kids safe and at home? So we do, immediately when we open the case, we do a home safety inspection. So we're looking at every aspect of that house, the electricity, the windows, the yard, every piece of it, door locks, fire alarms, the whole, the whole gamut.
I had a question related to what you were just talking about. What's your average intake discharge using your terminology? What's that average period of time that you're assisting these families?
So the length of stay varies. We like to work around nine months, nine, 12 months. Sometimes we get in a house and the family, after two or three months, they got it, they're good. Sometimes we work with families and then the one youth is successful, and then the other three are not. So we may stay and then change the target focus. So you know your families, you know the families over time, and over years and years, you know the families who need that extra intensive splash to help them get it. I mean, the best part is the families are, we got it, we got it, we don't have to call it. So.
I have one last question.
It's paid for in a partnership between the Department of Social Services and the school district.
So, yep, and it can be coserved as well.
This can be what?
Go through, go through, as well. We've already investigated one, Questark. So we, the district would pay 37 percent of the total. So, we, the district would pay 37% of the total cost, which puts it about, it's about $34,000 and change, only two dozen. So, it's about $34,000. It went through a poster, it's about, we get 75, 80?
72, 75.
Okay, so we're looking at about, a little under $10,000.
So, is it reimbursed?
Yes. Yep, yep.
We have a flexible fund spending line, so we are able to build in for activities, we build in for, you know, we open a family, you guys say, I know you have 10 cases, but we have this family, they just moved in the district, they're in crisis, we'll take another case. You know, we'll be flexible in that sense, because there's always somebody transitioning in now, so we always have that. And with the flex fund, we're able to go assess the family, go get them food, get them four meals, get what they need, so we can put more formal systems in place.
As part of this, our assessments will link everyone to any other services that they, whether it be health counseling, alcohol, and such. And we're also promoting and supporting all of the school activities as well, because a lot of the kids that we work with haven't always had opportunities, or maybe they're afraid to participate in a school, that sort of thing, so we'll go with that, you know, help them to have fun, whatever it takes.
Some of the families may not have a value of education because of the experiences they have had, so we actually work with the families on that piece and take a look at it, you know, they're part of it. What was your experience? Why, where are your reservations? So, that's one of the goals of the program, is to increase parental involvement in the school district. So, that's a big piece of it, is getting the parents on board, getting them involved, getting nearby in, because if you don't, you don't care for these kids.
Oh, then the program's starting this summer?
Soon, as soon as you sign that contract.
I can, I can address that. So, the next steps here, being that you proved this as a board, and you decided to move on, is to, to get your council involved with a contract, which we've given you the template, and then we will go to resolutions in the county legislature, and the county executive can, can get it passed, and then the state's gonna pay the 62%, the Jennifer said, and we'll get the finance people in the back room together to, to discuss how that happens. So.
So, do you expect to see something like this still take on a July meeting?
Ideally, we would have it before the board, and we'd have it on resolution for July, and so we would pass.
July 20th.
So, by the 1st of August, he's, the executive has three days to, to sign off on it, that they could start hiring and working with you as early as the first week of August. So, that's, that's our general timeline.
Because obviously, I mean, we can't make a decision till we have the calls.
Oh, sure, sure.
It certainly sounds like something that would be a real benefit to families in our district, I mean, so, seriously considering.
I think starting with the younger kids is really important, and I already saw that, you know, you waited there in high school, it's done.
That's a difference.
The horse is out of the gate. You know, I was, I was listening to, to Zan Dan talk about some of the activities, and like rock climbing and stuff, I was looking around to see who the attorney was. And I don't see, or the, or the insurance, the insurance carrier, I don't see, but it's all about safety, there's really few. Yeah. Usually, the attorney's like, ah, what? But they really do.
That one, I'm gonna say something.
They have a lot of experience, you know, they have a hundred years, 130 years' experience in moving, which, you know, as we move into this new area we are with, you know, we don't, we wanna prevent crossover kids from going from child welfare system into the juvenile, the juvenile justice system, and that's really what, it really gets sticky then. With raise the age coming at us, I think you know that, 16-year-old's gone this year, October 1st, we're really looking at community-based program, we're really looking heavily at prevention. And so, this is a good prevention program to start young, and then hopefully, when you climb, you get to high school, problem solved. You know, the small mental health issue now, if it gets resolved, it, it's got a big payoff, you gotta return investment down the road through the, through the teenager.
You see it in the elementary school, that, that shift in power, the equilibrium in the house, the parents lose the power, and they don't even know how it happens, and the next thing they know, they can't control that child anymore. They go from, stay home, you can stay home another day, make cookies, you know, it's not, you're in kindergarten, and then all of a sudden, you know, they're in fourth, fifth grade, telling the parents, maybe you'll.
The last question, I promise, I couldn't, I couldn't find anywhere that listed the districts. I know it said that you were in so many counties on your website and stuff like that, but could you tell us some of the local districts that you're involved in?
Right now, with our steppingstone program, which is a different prevention program, we work with the youth and family in every district in the county, in Montgomery County. So, with the Home Run Program, that's gonna be really directed at a specific district, because the family specialist is in this district. So, what we've done is target and talk to all of the schools, and all of the schools are signing up.
All meeting?
All county, all county. Well, that is a group, and then we decided, you know, who was going to sign up to meet with them first, so.
Four planes.
I think everybody knows who the 10 families are, and they were already, like, Mike, here's 10, we got 10.
Okay, anything else? Well, thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you, and we'll certainly consider it.
If you have any other questions with Jennifer, now, and she'll be there.
Thank you very much. Nice meeting you. Thank you.
Enjoy your summer. I'll tell you, you're bored, you got to work. Teachers, teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, the next point on the agenda is public comments. Thank you to the patients, and.
Tracy Evans. Tracy Evans, I'm a faculty member, and I'm a community member, and I'm a taxpayer. Since the Board of Education's vision statement was shared with the faculty, I have been contemplating how the business department, the business education department course offerings complement your goals and expectations for the 21st century learner. Since the Board of Education is charged with making curriculum decisions, I wanted you to be aware of some of the changes which have already happened, and some changes I would like to see happen in the future. I've spoken already with my administrator and felt that I needed to go to you, the people who vote on these changes. I've prepared a summary, brief summary of these ideas I have, and hope, I would like to actually discuss them with you further at some future date. So, I'm just, I'm gonna give this to you, to Bruce at your leisure. I'm not gonna give it back to you. Bonus for you. Additionally, I, I was looking at the agenda and looking it over, and I would like to offer my services and help any way I can with this school scheduling evaluation committee. Any way I could help, I'd love to, okay? Thank you.
We'll be, we'll be looking for volunteers.
Right.
Volunteer.
We'll talk about it in a little while.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else?
Have your voice.
Hi, everybody. First, I wanna say that I am sad that I have to come here so late into you, but I just wanna relay a few events that have happened over the last couple of months, and it is about the, cutting the sections of kindergarten, or section of kindergarten. About two months ago, Ms. Ward came to my classroom, telling me there would no longer be four sections, and I was chosen to leave the grade level. I was not given the courtesy of meeting in her office, it was kind of a pocket.
Do you hold on a second? I think you probably should hear this in the executive session. So, which we'll have right now.
Okay.